Ladies and gentlemen, we will now session. Welcome to the twenty first double I double S Shangri-La Dialogue and this special session on defence cooperation and small state security. My name is Viraj Solanki. I am a research fellow for South and Central Asia at the International Institute for Strategic Studies, based in London, where my research focus includes on small state security in the Indo-Pacific region. Before we begin the session, could I please advise those of you sitting around the table who have not done so already to insert your name badge chip down into the slot on the right-hand side of the unit? You will be logged into the microphone and it will display your name on the screen. Your name will also appear on the digital name board in front of you. Let me begin by saying that I am delighted to chair this panel. Island and littoral states in Europe and the Indo-Pacific region are expanding their military modernisation efforts and defence cooperation with external and regional partners as major power rivalries are increasingly playing out on their shores. In this context, a few days ago, my colleague Antoine Lavec and I published an ISS blog titled Navigating Small State Security in the Indo-Pacific. I would recommend reading this article in the context of this special session. This special session on defence cooperation and small state security will examine growing major power interest in Europe and the Indo-Pacific region, smaller states' concerns and their prospects for setting the cooperation agenda. I am delighted that this session has such a high-level panel of defence ministers representing important smaller states of Europe and the Indian Ocean. But before I introduce each of the speakers individually, along with a reminder for them to make brief introductory remarks, ideally about five minutes each, I want to say a few words on the question-and-answer session that will follow. For those of you sitting around the table, if you'd like to ask a question or make a comment, please press the speak button on the microphone. Your name will then appear on the screen in front of me. There's nothing more for you to do, but when I ask for you to speak by name, the speak button will turn red, indicating that the microphone is live for you to make an intervention. Please remember to announce your name and affiliation before asking a question or making a comment. Please note that this entire special session is on the record and is being livestreamed. It now gives me great pleasure to introduce our first speaker, Mr. Hanno Pevka, Minister of Defence of Estonia. Minister Pevka was appointed as Estonia's Defence Minister in July twenty twenty-two and has previously held other ministerial positions, including Minister of Interior, Justice and Social Affairs. Minister, we look forward to hearing about Estonia's role in NATO and your growing security challenges on your shared border with Russia. The floor is yours, Minister.
Thank you very much, and it's good to be here in Shangri-La. And it's definitely an honour for me to share my views and our views regarding the regional security and, of course, our view as a small country. Well, as a small country, you know, and being in Nordics together with Finland, and Finland is our good neighbour in north, we, of course, share the border with Russia. And to be honest, this is the only place where we see the threat, possible threat coming. So we don't see any threat from Finland. We don't see any threat from south, from Latvia, nor west, which is Sweden. So our geographical location definitely means that we have to look into the history, learn from there and also be ready to avoid any of these mistakes we may be made or what the history has shown us throughout the years. But still, for us, what is extremely important, that we have to acknowledge our size. Our size, although it's around sixty times bigger than Singapore, though it is only around two point five times less from that size, which is occupied by Russia in Ukraine at the moment. So at the moment, in Ukraine, about two and a half Estonia's size are occupied. Just to understand what the size we are talking about when you talk about Ukraine-Russia war. Then, location. Location-wise, Estonia has always been very attractive, especially for Russia, because we have the access to the sea, the Baltic Sea, and Danish Straits are the channel to Atlantics. And definitely, this is important and has been important for Russia. And this is why they also invaded Estonia and we were under occupation from nineteen forty to nineteen ninety-one. And of course, when I look at these challenges, what we face today, then, you know, I could ask that, okay, what is the threat? Estonia is a member of European Union, Estonia is a member of NATO, and it should be okay. But I just give you some numbers for the scene setter. Russian military budget this year is around thirty-one percent of the state budget. Russian expenditure to defence from their GDP is around or close to seven percent. And Russia has approved the military reform for upcoming years, which foresees increasing the personnel to one point five million and equipment from twenty percent increase to five hundred, seven hundred percent of increase. They are establishing a new army corps close to Finnish border. And my question is very simple. When you have a friendly neighbour, why are you increasing your military to the size which is comparable to the times when Russia had Ukraine, had a war with Afghanistan? So during the Soviet golden time, Russian army was one point one, one point two million people. And today, they are going to one point five million. NATO has no plans to attack Russia. When NATO has no plans, when Estonia or Finland has no plans to attack Russia, why? And when we don't see any threat coming also from Russia, from European side, why you are increasing your army to one point five million? And of course, that means that when the threat is so imminent, then we have to reply to that threat. This is why our approach has been that we've increased our defence spendings to two percent or close to two percent already in two thousand eight. Since two thousand fourteen, we've been constantly over two percent. And since the war started in Ukraine, in twenty-two, we increased our defence spendings more to, more than to three percent. So and this year, we have three point four percent. So Estonia is among four countries in NATO today who has more than three percent. So Estonia, Greece, United States and Poland are the countries who have more than three percent. So we take very seriously our commitments in NATO, which says that there is an Article Five, which everybody knows, so one for all, all for one. But we also take very seriously Treaties Charter Three, which says that first and foremost, you have to do maximum or everything yourself in order to defend your country. And our defence lies on three pillars. First, this is defence readiness, defence willingness. This is something which comes from the heart, and we have the reserve army. We have very similar army, which is also known in Finland. And I know that, as I will, will talk about that a bit, so I will not go to that. The second pillar for us is defence readiness. So this is everything we do, and we do a lot for our defence capabilities. When, by average, NATO countries spend twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent to defence capabilities from their defence budget, then Estonia is investing fifty-three to fifty-five percent of our defence budget to capabilities. So we are investing a lot to our, to new capabilities. And the third pillar is defence cooperation. And Estonia is probably one of the most integrated countries in the world, not only from the defence point of view, but also in other fields. But in defence, we have the Baltic Cooperation, we have the Nordic Baltic Cooperation, we have the JEF, which is the Joint Expeditionary Forces, which includes also Netherlands and the UK. And of course, the main umbrella is NATO. So already in early nineties, we set a very clear understanding for us in the international community that never alone again. And we have kept this understanding ever since, not to be alone as a small country. So and to come to our role in NATO, yes, we are very vocal. And also going to the Washington Summit, we have been offering to NATO all the time different propositions. One was to go to two percent in Vilnius. Then, before that, a year ago, we, in Madrid, we were vocally advocating for the new defence plans. And now the new defence plans in NATO are approved. And going to Washington, we are advocating for the ACDC initiative. So it's very simple to remember. So you remember the metal band ACDC. It has something to do with metal also. So it's actually, it's an allied capability development commitment. So this is the ACDC. So but we clearly see that there are shortages, there are challenges for the NATO countries in order to be ready to defend our alliance. And this is why we need to increase rapidly the defence spendings. And this is what we are advocating for the Washington, that these defence plans, which we approved, are really executable. So I believe that for the introduction, this is enough. And, you know, but the main outcome still is that, you know, for the small country, you cannot be alone. And of course, you have to do maximum yourself to, in order to defend yourself. Just a last bullet. We've had our independence war with Russia from nineteen eighteen to nineteen twenty. And when we started our independence war in nineteen eighteen, then our army had only two thousand soldiers. And not all of them had rifles, but we came out from this war victoriously. So that means that even a bee can bite an elephant. So there is a chance for all the small countries in close cooperation and doing yourself a lot, be safe and secure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister, and for outlining the importance of defence.
非常感谢艾沙尼亚
Minister Mohamed Ghassan Mamoun, who is Minister of Defence of the Maldives. Minister Mamoun was appointed in November twenty twenty-three as the Defence Minister of the Maldives. He previously served as Member of Parliament for the Thaag Garedu constituency and served on three parliamentary committees between twenty twelve and twenty eighteen. We look forward to hearing from the minister on the new Maldivian government's defence priorities. Minister.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Assalamualaikum and a very good afternoon. His Excellency President Dr. Mohammed Maiz and the Ministry of Defence are extremely grateful to the International Institute of Strategic Studies and the Government of Singapore for this opportunity to voice our concerns at the prestigious Shangri-La Dialogue. It is indeed a great honour and a privilege for me to address such an illustrious gathering. The security of small states is an inflection point in history. For nearly eight decades, small states such as the Maldives have relied upon international law as the ultimate guarantor of independence. The assumption being that the larger states would respect the tenets that govern the post-World War international system. While we were not wrong in that assumption, of late, regrettably, some have opted to ignore these values, challenging this belief system. This puts smaller states in a more vulnerable position. To face these obstacles, smaller and weaker nations must forge and foster stronger and, if necessary, new partnerships, both among themselves and with others. We applaud Singapore's leadership, both within and outside the forum of small states. In advocating for respect to international norms, the Maldives is proud to partner with Singapore in this regard. While we remain committed to international law, we are cognisant of the fact that unless we build our own capacity, both nationally and in collaboration with others, we will become even more vulnerable. Defence cooperation, both bilateral and multilateral, gives small states an important avenue to bolster their potential to pursue security and developmental goals. His Excellency President Dr. Mohammed Maiz is a firm proponent of international cooperation, especially defence cooperation. Since assuming office in November last year, we have continued to engage with traditional partners such as India and the United States. We have already held a joint maritime exercise this year with India and Sri Lanka. Just four days ago, we concluded yet another joint exercise with the United States. All small states strive to protect their independence, sovereignty and territorial integrity. His Excellency President Dr. Mohammed Maiz's defence policy prioritises building the capacity of our own forces to ensure peace, stability and the security of the Maldives and proximate maritime domains to standards expected by all. President Maiz seeks to retain current cooperation while emphasising the need for additional partnerships. He also prioritises increase in frequency and the scope of defence cooperation engagements with the aim of building the capability and the capacity of the Maldives National Defence Force to respond to the varied array of existing and emerging threats, such as maritime terrorism, transnational crimes, illegal resource exploitation and climate-induced extreme weather events. The Maldives gives the utmost importance to our international obligations. Given the large volume of global shipping through our maritime domain, our strategic location holds us responsible to safeguard the trade routes along the Indian Ocean. The involvement of non-state actors adds extreme complexity, increasing the need for regional defence cooperation and coordination to ensure freedom of navigation while protecting the interests of all stakeholders. For the Maldives, defence cooperation does not and must not involve a foreign military presence on our soil. It is our hope that our friends and partners will respect the democratic decision of the people. Only then can we have deeper and broader defence cooperation and collaboration that is meaningful and beneficial for the Maldives and our friends and partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister, for outlining the new Maldivian government's defence priorities, including continued engagement with traditional partners such as India and the US, as well as the need for additional partnerships. I'll now turn to our third speaker, Mr. Issa Polkenen, the Deputy Minister of the Ministry of Defence of Finland. Minister Polkenen was appointed as the Deputy Minister in Finland's Ministry of Defence in January twenty twenty-two and is also Chair of the Security Committee. He is a Lieutenant General and previous roles include serving as the Director General of the European Union Military Staff from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. Minister, we look forward to hearing about Finland's role in NATO and also the shared security threat with your border with Russia. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me to speak to this distinguished audience. It's a great honour for me to be here, first time ever in Singapore, hopefully not the last time, that I promised to my counterpart at least. I would like to start, if I may, on geography, as my Estonian colleague did. Finland is a small and remote state which is dependent heavily on sea lines of communication. I can call Finland as an island. Ninety, over ninety percent of our foreign trade goes through the sea lines of Baltic Sea. Our neighbours are Russia in the east, with over one thousand three hundred kilometres of common border, Sweden in the west, Norway in the north, and Estonia in the south, which is separated by the Gulf of Finland. It's only eighty kilometres distance from Helsinki to Tallinn. Historically, Finland has depicted herself in the borderline of east and west. Having our strategic position, like I figured it out, the next thing is, of course, to study our threat assessment on short, medium and long-term perspective. Militarily, the threat for Finland has always come from the east. The threat assessment looks gloomy when you are outnumbered in manpower, equipment and economical strength. That has forced us to come up with our own unique small state security solution that we call comprehensive security model. In that model, total defence is inbuilt as well. Finland has a long history of military non-alignment, which ended on fourth of April two thousand twenty-four, a little bit more than one year ago, when we became a member of NATO. However, the time of non-alignment was the time when the comprehensive security model was born and redefined. It all started in the Second World War. We were even a smaller country in terms of population. We were three point six million people. Five hundred fifty thousand of them were deployed in the frontier. At the same time, we were able to preserve the vital functions of the society. So we had actually schools running, we have public safety and security, we have the health services, we even had the foreign trade to a small extent. And really, really, that gave us a lot of food for thinking of the World War Two. And we finally came out with the idea to develop that more as the total defence concept, to cover also the different other type of threats and risks we may have, being then economical pressure disasters, you name it, pandemias, et cetera, et cetera. We formed a security committee. I am the chairman of the Security Committee. In the committee, we have representatives of all government administrations, NGOs and business life. So it also the Finnish society and third sector is present there. We are the custodians of the comprehensive security model. We are not the decision-making body, but we provide recommendations and advice to government on a regular basis. Militarily, our strategic position and threat assessment means that we need to have a strong sparehead capabilities to deter and a large military reserve to defend our borders. From nineteen ninety-five, one of the sparehead capability for us has been a modern, well-armed fleet of fighter jets. We currently operate with F-eighteens, which we are replacing with F-thirty-fives in upcoming years. Procurement for sixty-four F-thirty-fives has already taken place. Cost-bilson service has been our answer to produce a large-scale and well-trained reserve for the Finnish Armed Forces. It is a cost-effective and the only way Finland can have a large enough reserve in comparison to its threat. It is crucial that our reserve forces can operate on air, land and sea and in cyber domain. By and multilateral military cooperation with our closest neighbours and partners has also been a key factor in our defence strategy. We have very deep cooperation bilaterally with Sweden, also with other Nordic countries within the framework of Nordic Defence Cooperation and multilaterally in Joint Expeditionary Force led by UK. Today, we are working very closely with Baltic States, in particular with Estonia. Finland applied NATO membership after Russia invaded Ukraine in two thousand twenty-two years ago. We saw that Russia is capable and willing to wage a full-scale war on its neighbour. It became clear that no small state could cope then by themselves when brutally attacked by a much bigger enemy. We believe that membership in the world's most powerful military alliance offers enough deterrence and security guarantees if needed. However, as a NATO member, we are not going to abolish our strong national defence. Instead, we are going to strengthen our comprehensive security, military sparehead capabilities, large reserve and military cooperation complementary to NATO members. That is beneficial for both Finland and also NATO's collective defence. Of course, our model is, you can describe it as quite painful in a case of a total war. We are, we are going to mobilise also the entire society to support Finnish soldiers. If needed, we are prepared and willing to do it. However, it may take a long time to recover, even decades in the case of brutal and total war. Therefore, our comprehensive security model, that includes also total defence, must be complemented with active and engaging security policy arrangements with like-minded and oriented larger powers and group of nations. Finland has actively sought membership in Western organisations, like Estonia, the Northern Atlantic Treaty Organisation being the last. And in NATO, it's questioned really of hard defence. In addition to determined bilateral relations, we strive to establish various and overlapping multilateral agreements and dependencies with as many Western nations as possible. The idea is to create interdependencies, economic, military and cultural ties that would tie us with our partners and allies together, raising the threshold of being forced to react to an aggression alone. Active participation in the United Nations, membership in the European Union and NATO Nordic Defence Cooperation, as well as unincinerised security arrangement like the Joint Expeditionary Force led by UK, are all seen as a larger than their sum in the overall security of Finland. Small nations, especially those neighbouring much larger and possible hostile countries, cannot afford rely in one solution or arrangement in their security thinking. Multilayered, non-exclusive international cooperation paired with robust military and society resilience are Finland's answer to a dilemma. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Minister, for also outlining Finland's comprehensive security model and new and growing defence partnerships. This brings us to the end of our panel statements and the start of a question-and-answer session. Before I turn to the floor, let me just remind all of you what you need to do if you want to ask a question or make a comment. For those of you sitting around the table, you need to press the speak button on the microphone. Your name will then appear on the screen in front of me. And when I ask you to speak, the speak button will turn red, indicating that the microphone is live and that you can make a comment or ask a question. Let me begin the Q and A session by asking the two, by asking two questions to each of the panelists. Firstly, what is the single most important change you would like to see in the next twelve months to help smaller states increase defence cooperation with major powers on their preferred terms? And what are the challenges to achieving this? And this would be at a regional level. Secondly, what are the prospects for enhancing defence cooperation between the Euro-Atlantic and and Indo-Pacific regions, whereas we have representatives here from the Indian Ocean and Europe? I will start this in reverse order, starting with Minister Palkinen.
Thank you for your excellent questions. First question in terms of our priorities and challenges in coming year. Being a new member in NATO, just only after one year, when actually we have been signed, we have signed the Atlantic, North Atlantic Treaty, it is paramount important that we make a progress in terms of the military planning to really look deeper the Finnish defense as a part of the NATO's defense. We are expecting to have some decisions taken later this year in Washington Summit on actually NATO view approach to new members, Finland and Sweden, in particular command and control arrangement is of crucial importance for us. Second subject related to transatlantic cooperation, how to deepen it. I would say that Finnish and Swedish membership more or less has completed, if I look from the Western European point of view, the integration to different organizations. Almost all European nations in the West are the members of NATO at the moment. But having said that, we have also been having the approach bilaterally with the United States. We are likely to conclude the process of having defense cooperation agreement with the United States. Same applies to Sweden and Denmark, Norway is already there, so that kind of Nordic approach to the United States is there as well. If you look, I mean, in broader terms, this part of the world, I would say that, of course, security challenges, some of them are universal. They are not dependent on your geography that much. Let's be mentioned about in a softer side, actually, the climate change, for example. But also cyberspace are the subject of, let me say, common concerns globally with like-minded countries. Secondly, I personally think that we could provide some examples for the states here in the Indo-Pacific, how could you could further develop your defense cooperation. Of course, your structures are different, but same procedures can be applied here to an extent you would like to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister. Minister Malmunen.
Thank you. Although everyone will see the Maldives as very small, we are very small in population, around four hundred and fifty thousand, but our maritime domain is huge, almost one million square kilometers. So our main challenge is keeping the peace in our maritime domain. The biggest change that I would like, that we would like to see in the next twelve months is increase in dialogue with all partners. Maldives is a friend to all. We have no enemies. And we would like everyone to hear our voice and work with us and help us achieve our goals rather than coming to us with pre-formed ideas. So the main way to go forward in defense cooperation, in our view, is through dialogue, discussion, and seeing how we can help each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. Minister Pavka.
Thank you very much, definitely. First question is a bit easier for me, because when I'm thinking about the next twelve months, then we have a huge number of elections coming all over the world. So I believe more than seventy countries globally will have general elections this year. We have European Union Parliament elections, we have US elections, which are maybe, you know, the ones which will change the world order or, you know, possibly the most. But when I'm just thinking, what is the one thing? Then from the security point of view, this is in our region, this is the executability of the NATO regional plans. And for that, there is one thing to get, or one thing if I have to mention, and this is from the Jerry Maguire movie where Tom had, Jesus. Well, Curtis, Jesus, my, yes, so it's late already, sorry. Tom Cruise. Tom Cruise was Jerry Maguire, and he said the famous sentence, "Show me the money." So this is what we all need, because today only twenty countries from thirty-two are investing two percent to defense. And I will just give you one number more in this row of different numbers, what I already mentioned. In last twenty-five years, NATO countries' defense budget increased around sixty-one percent. Russian defense budget, at the same time, increased five hundred ninety-two percent. So and this is the regional challenge for us, because we are short of money, and this means that we are lacking stockpiles, et cetera. Now, the second question regarding the global challenges and global security prospects. Well, on one hand, I would say that we all here in the room, as representatives of the countries, are sitting also in the United Nations. And in the United Nations, we have some rules, agreed rules in the club. Somehow, some countries are not fulfilling these rules or not obeying to these rules. I would like to see that every country belonging to the United Nations are, or is accepting also United Nations Charter and United Nations Charter of Human Rights. And I believe when everybody is accepting these rules, then we will not see wars, as we see at the moment, where hundreds, and some days, thousands of people are killed every single day in Ukraine. And, you know, basically, this is a very simple wish, that, you know, that globally, when we can all accept the rules-based world, it doesn't matter what is our state order, then we would probably have a much safer place to live globally. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Minister. The floor is now open to others who want to make a question or a comment, and I'll start with Hafiz Hashim from Brunei. The floor is yours.
Hi. Thank you, Ministers, for your wonderful remarks. I just have a question. Since all the speakers are not from the region, so how do you perceive, it applies to all of the panel, yeah? So how do you perceive ASEAN role in managing the regional order? Because it is imperative for us to understand that in Southeast Asia, we don't have the NATO-like, you know, security initiatives. But, yeah, I would like to know more about your thoughts about how ASEAN as a regional institution can provide a security role, basically, now in managing regional order. Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Pavka.
Thank you very much. Fully understand that the regions might be different and regional security is different. Of course, it all starts from that, is there someone in the region who is aggressive? So in our neighborhood, unfortunately, Russia is aggressive, and I do not see that it will change. So in here, we have not seen, luckily, for many, many years, such a big conflict. And of course, looking at why we have NATO. So NATO is a North Atlantic Treaty Organization, which means that we try to keep the peace, and we were being able to keep that peace, you know, and that it's, you know, it's quite easy to get married, but try to keep the marriage for seventy-five years. So and it's the same with the peace and the different organizations. So it's, you know, easy to agree that we have the peace, but it's more difficult to keep that peace. So of course, one is that when you have the common ground and common understanding in the region, what is important to have, the free trade, and what is important to keep these values, what we have, not only here but globally, then I believe, you know, it's not like indefinitely necessary to have such an organization as NATO. But regional cooperation, as we have also with Nordic Baltic countries, or we have with the JEFF, what was already mentioned, the Joint Expeditionary Forces, so that kind of cooperation is, you know, something we always can do. So normally, you know, I try to bring difficult political questions or military questions to the everyday's level. And when you have a trouble in the family and the kids are not listening to you, then the first thing you have to do is talk. So speak to them, and then, you know, when you have any conflict arising, then the first thing, of course, is to avoid it and speak. But, you know, there is no universal solution that you have to, you have to establish NATO-like organization in this neighborhood. It's not necessary when everybody is accepting the international law. Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Malmunen.
Thank you. From our perspective, we feel it's very important for us to form new partnerships with ASEAN countries, given the fact that almost a trillion dollars' worth of shipping passes through the eighth-degree channel, which is just the north of Maldives, from east to west and west to east every year. So it is our responsibility to keep these sea routes safe, and we look to everyone to help us build our capacity so that we can fulfill our international obligations. So it is very important for us, for ASEAN to be peaceful and to coordinate with yourselves and to coordinate with others who can, who need your help and who can help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Palkinen.
Thank you very much. I think that's an excellent question. I would like to, if I may, to use an example of long-lasting, longstanding Nordic Defense Cooperation, that was established already in nineteen sixty's, to foster the five Nordic nations' UN peacekeeping cooperation in that framework called Nordic Defense Cooperation. It's a non-legally binding agreement we have at MOE level, which actually ties our nations' and defense administration very closely to each other. We have actually a system where we have a rotating presidency, one year, next year will be Finland, and with certain responsibilities. But it is important, they are distinguished, different levels of cooperation. We have the ministers of defense that provide the political guidance. Then we have the Paul Mill structures that provide a guidance for the militaries, and militaries who work on the practical fields. And that could cover, I mean, all possible areas of military responsibilities, you wish. Very flexible structure, not any permanent secretaries. We work on our, with our national capabilities and strengthen a little bit when we have the presidency. And it is low cost, but if you are very established, very easy to run and cover. That is a good example of well-functioning cooperation that also, in our case, provides some added value for the NATO membership, because not only five Nordic nations are the members of NATO as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next turn to Big Tran from Vietnam.
Thanks, Marash. So my question also to all the speakers, because I would like to see whether your countries have similar or different approaches. So, you know, due to your limited resources, so small states, we need, you know, assistance and help from our allies and partners. So how does your country balance between external help and strategic autonomy? Thanks.
Minister Pavka.
Well, as a small country, of course, when you talk about strategic autonomy, then in Europe at least, we talk more about the European strategic autonomy. To be honest, for me, yeah, well, it is important, but it's not so important, because when you talk about especially military acquisitions, for instance, then for me, I have set to our procurement agency three basic instructions. First, we need to have the best quality. Second, for the best price. And third, as quickly as possible. So that means that, you know, sometimes you can produce yourself, but as a small country, you don't have all the capabilities. Now is the question that what is important is rather regional cooperation, and this is something we try to develop constantly. So to make joint procurements together with the Baltic states, for instance, that we are acquiring together the air defense systems, we are acquiring together the vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. So we are like expanding the areas of joint procurements. So this is something we need to do. And of course, you know, looking at the challenges what we have also regionally, so it's more important that also on the European level, we have the common understanding, what we can do together, and we try to keep separately, in Europe at least, that the military cooperation and military planning will stay in NATO, as this is a defense corporation, defense organization. And in European Union level, or on European Union level, we try to look on defense a bit more broadly than what we can do in order to help the countries. Because so far, it has been a very clear understanding that on European Union level, the defense is a member state's, member state's thing to do. It's not something we do on the European Union level, but now we see that still there is, there are some things we have to do together. So joint acquisitions also on European level for ammunition, for air defense, are something we are looking for after these European elections. So maybe, you know, these are the remarks which gives you a bit of understanding. But what was the first part? So one is the strategic autonomy, and you had also the second part of the question very quickly. Okay, yes, okay. This, so, yeah, the balance is there, you know, that, at least for us, because, you know, for Finland, it's a bit different, so they have ammunition production, they have APC production, so armored car production. And of course, then you have to see that what you can, but this I will comment that. But from our point of view, you know, it's, at the end of the day, it's the use of taxpayers' money, and you have to get the best products for the best price, and at this very moment, unfortunately, as quickly as possible. So this is what we are looking for, but of course, we are now also started just a couple of weeks ago, the special program in the government for defense investments. And we established a fund which brings also the private investors to that fund to scale up the startups. So you have some new innovations in defense. Now the problem is that you cannot scale up these, and for that, we now created the Defense Investment Fund. So these are the possibilities, of course, as possible, buy from your home to have the autonomy, but at the end of the day, you have to be very careful with the taxpayers' money.
Thank you. Minister Gassan.
Traditionally, Maldives has minimal defense spending, and we depend heavily on aid from our friends and partners. We've been a non-aligned country, and we don't have any political affiliations with any, and we are friends to everyone. The main aim now is to focus on building our own capability, working with our friends and partners internationally, and hold the position that such aid will not give anyone the right to dictate strategic terms to the Maldives. If that sort of conversation arises, we will steer clear from that. Thank you.
Minister Palkinen.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Excellent, excellent question. I think my Estonian colleague already answered part of this, your questions. In terms of strategic autonomy, I think it's really been, in a way, misunderstood and miscommunicated in Europe. It's, at least... miscommunicated in Europe, at least if I look at the transatlantic area. The strategic autonomy is, in the broader context, is understood as a kind of the way or approach when you... It's not of defence or military exclusively, but more on economical side, technological side, how you actually put the Europe compared to big national players like United States and China. It's not the kind of this defence and security, but you look at technologies and in broader terms, actually, what you need to have on your own hands, not to being dependent, too much dependent on outsiders. That's more, let me say, economical and political. But it is sometimes misunderstood that we would like to protect our own defence markets in Europe, and that's not on the genes of Europeans and European Union indeed. The second question, the first question you made, I think for me, it's a question of security of supply, like Hanno mentioned. We have relatively strong and big armed forces in Finland in comparison to our size. And we do think that we need, for the security of supply purposes, we need to have our own industries in certain key areas, like the production of the ammunition, production of the, let me say, different type of vehicles, tractor, non-tract, et cetera, small arms. So we need to have that capability in our hands, regardless of what we have done, I mean, agreements with others. And today's security environment, and not only the war, but also the COVID, has really put a lot more emphasis on your own stocks and your own capabilities to be independent. If something happens, you need to have... It's not only military, but it tackles the broader societal and society responsibilities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, minister. I'll now turn to Sawathai Nem from Cambodia.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to our panel for sharing your perspective in terms of small state security. We certainly have learned a lot from what you have shared in this panel so far and from the perspective of Cambodia as also a small state. There are another thing that we find parallel to the things that you do. Firstly, being strengthening our defence capacity and building our core capability and military expertise. Second thing is, while being small, we look to strengthen and enhance cooperations. And that is being through our defence diplomacy. And that is the strong part of our, the major part of our defence strategy. We do this through a number of military exercises and that we've done with our partners in the past and present, including China and US. And we also look forward to cooperating further and to enhance our defence capability and capacity. So I can feel that there are a number of things that are parallel. But seeing that the defence threat assessments from where you are in the globe is very different from, not very different, but inherently different from where we are. We still see, it is still very important for us to strengthen this on the basis of building our defence, not being offensive, but being defensive and continuing to safeguard our independence, sovereignty and maintain our stability and peace. I would like to also, my question is that we do this through strategy at the national level. So I wanted to know how much of, how you tie between the national strategy to the defence strategy from your perspective. So I would say that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start in reverse order with Minister Pukinen.
Sorry, I didn't quite hear the question.
How do you tie national strategies to defence strategies?
Yeah, thank you very much. I got the point, but I wasn't quite sure.
Thank you.
In the Finnish case, our national strategy that covers the foreign policy, security policy and defence policy is defined or described in two different governmental documents, white paper on security policy and then respectively, white paper on defence policy and defence. And we produce those two papers, white papers, as we call them, by every government. So currently, they are ongoing processes to be complemented, both of the strategies or the white papers, by the end of this year. But really, the question of the national security strategy is quite interesting, because by definition, we don't have in the one document, but it's divided more or less into two different documents. And the question is whether we would need a separate national security strategy, which is subject for the consideration. But today, two white papers covers more or less that strategy already. So what's us considering how to do within in future, perhaps in a different way? Thank you.
Minister Mammeh.
The President of the Maldives, His Excellency President Dr. Mohammed Maes, gives the utmost importance to the independence, sovereignty of the Maldives. Hence, defence policy is the backbone of our national policy, which means even all our economic decisions are based on our defence policy, which will not allow any other country to have a strategic influence on the Maldives. Thank you.
Minister Pukinen.
Thank you for that very interesting question, because you know, with all stars from that, are you free or not? Are you independent or not? So then, when you are not independent, then you cannot have a national strategy. So when you are independent, then you can have also a national strategy. And then that brings you to that, how big is the role of defence strategy in that. So in Estonia, we have agreed that we have this national strategy called Estonia 2035, which covers all the different areas, including defence, but not so heavily looking on very detailed level. So for the defence, we have three layers. First is the parliamentary level discussion paper, which is called Basic Principle of Security Policy, which is made together with the Minister of Foreign Affairs. And this is approved by the parliament. And this basically sets the main goals of Estonian security and also says that we will invest into defence at least 3% of our GDP. Then the next document, where we are describing already in more details what we will do in defence, is called National Defence Plan for 10 Years. And this is approved by the government. And then on the ministerial level, we go even more into details and we set the Defence Development Plan for four years. And then already, of course, each year, we have the budget. So basically, we have main principles set by the parliament, 10-year plan by the government, four-year plan by the ministry, and then each year, budget. And it all then relates to the National Strategy 2035 and how it relates. So it has to be made, of course, in coordination. And our responsibility is go to the parliament and give each year the overview, how we are doing. So this is our way to approach the planning.
Thank you, minister. I will now turn to Helen Stratton from Australia. Helen.
Thank you very much for your presentations. As you were going through the various statistics of the growth and production in the Russian military and defence material, I have in the back of my mind the No Limits partnership between China and Russia. In the Indo-Pacific region, we have seen a similar exponential increase in production of material by China, accompanied by investments in critical economic sectors. Have you experienced a similar approach in your power or economic sectors by Russia? And do you have any advice for small states in our region?
Thank you. I'll turn first to Minister Pukinen.
Well, unfortunately, regarding Russia, we see constant increase of the threat perception. And that is not only on the military level directly, it's also the hybrid attacks. And we see, not only see, but we have arrested people who got direct orders from the Russian services to act in Estonia, and some acts have been also already conducted. So we've seen that from the international media, the same in United Kingdom, we've seen that in Poland, in Germany, in Spain. So unfortunately, we see that, you know, the Russian approach to security in our neighbourhood is not only linearly military. So they are doing that in different levels and on different layers. So this is something we have to address. Estonia was the first country in the world who faced a large-scale, state-orchestrated cyber attack in 2007, which was conducted by Russia. And after that, one thing we created was the Cyber Defence League. So in our defence model, we have also the voluntary organisation called Defence League or the territorial defence in many other countries. And inside of that organisation, we have then this Cyber Defence League, which brings together the private sector experts if needed. So, but you know, these are just the steps I'm saying, because Russia is hostile. And we have to address this. And unfortunately, the only thing Russia understands is a power.
Minister Pukinen.
Yeah, thank you. I may a bit compliment on Russia and also their conventional capabilities. But first of all, I agree with Hanno on how Russia acts. And I think they have considered that they have been in hybrid force since the occupation, illegal occupation of Crimea. And their actions have become more and more robust and hostile. If I look in terms of the regulations or word order aspects, I would say that it's comparison that we are playing soccer football and they are playing with the rules of American football. So it's quite unfair, because they don't have any rules. And we need to respect the rules, to put it in that way. And that actually has put us under quite a challenge. For example, the illegal immigration that Russia has actually supported on our borders has led us to close the border with Russia, unfortunately, and really put our legislation and our rule-based approach under challenge. Perhaps that has been the objective for the Russians to do it, but this is the case. But then, in terms of the military capabilities, in most of the countries in Western Europe, after the end of the Cold War, the main battle tanks and anti-rapids were melted. And we looked, our nations look, the situation in such a way that only expeditionary forces will be needed. Meanwhile, Russia preserved all these legacy equipment from the Cold War era, and they have a huge potential to maintain the same level of the military, conventional military capability through the industrial, of course, a little bit manufacturing, to maintain the same level of military capabilities as they have conventional capabilities as they have today, regardless of heavy losses. Which means that we need to be prepared for ourselves to face the challenge as well with the massive amount of the conventional capabilities available in the hands of Russia.
Just a very short comment regarding the challenges, as I mentioned, because you know, in democracies, especially in Europe, we face the challenge that, you know, that when we want to establish or build a new ammunition factory, it takes at least 1.5 years or two years to make all the environmental assessment, you know, and different planning processes, et cetera. And when there is, you know, for Putin, when he wants to say that now the sausage factory will start to produce the shells, then they will start to produce next day. So this is the difference, you know. And there is our challenge to cope with that, how we can be on the same level as it takes, you know, at least three years to get the first round of ammunition out of the factory when Russia can do that immediately. So these are the challenges of democracies.
Thank you. I'll now turn to Vanarith Chiang from Cambodia.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ministers, for the excellent remarks. My question also in connection to previous question on economic security, because economic security for small state is national security, how do you define economic security and how to strengthen that, the foundation of economic security? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start in reverse with Minister Pukinen.
Yeah, thank you. It's an excellent, excellent question. I would say that economical security, as a definition used, is not used as a, as an, let me say, as a separate subject, but it's more related on resilience of the society. We are very much dependent, of course, on the economy. And if you look through the threat perception, where the hybrid warfare is ongoing, the vulnerabilities are on the civilian sector very much, that directly or indirectly may impact on your economy. Banking systems, I mean, energy, et cetera, et cetera. But actually, economy itself is part of, let me say, more comprehensive security construction. But of course, if you look at the economic security in terms of avoiding the disturbances on trade, et cetera, et cetera, of course, we have prepared ourselves. It's one of the subjects that I need to look after as a chairman of the Security Committee. We have the national centre of the supply, that we have actually storities on critical materials like gas, oil, grains, medical equipment, et cetera, et cetera. That could actually, we could use these storities if there are economic crises, other type of crises that may ask us to lean on these resources. But that's my answer. Thank you.
Minister Mammeh.
Maldives is made up of a number of islands, over 1,000 islands, and the biggest one being almost five kilometres. So the main challenge that we have had, as we are importers of everything, is food security. Now, under the initiative of President Mohammed Maes, we have started the works to try and produce staple foods locally. Traditionally, it wasn't possible because of the small land area that we have. Now, we have imported vertical farming technologies. And the current focus is on getting to a point where the Maldives can sustain itself in the area of food security. And economics will come possibly after that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, minister. Minister Pukinen.
Well, thank you much. Well, regarding the economic security, so of course, it's more about economic freedom, either in economic freedom or not, because economic security is provided still also by the service providers. So I will just give an example that we have connection with Finland, we have the gas pipeline, we have energy connection, and we have the data connection links. And in one day, we saw that in international waters, there was a Chinese vessel, New New Bollard Bear, which damaged all these connections. So and this is, of course, now the question also for the international law of, international maritime law, UN laws, where we see that there is no possibility to act in international waters. And now is the question that do we have to revise this altogether internationally, in the International Maritime Organisation, how to... How to guarantee that these connections, which are under sea, in the seabed, that these connections are untouched? And otherwise, you know, we have to bring up a new layer of security. We didn't have much discussion today about cybersecurity, but also the connectivity and connections of the countries, which brings you the economic freedom and economic trade. So basically, what you need for the economic security or the economic freedom is the connections. Doesn't matter, is it, you know, under sea, above the sea, on the land, railways, whatever. You need the connections. You need to have the free trade regulation. And of course, the question of taxation and all that. But nevertheless, as I see it from the security point of view, it is extremely important to guarantee to all the players in economy that they can, they can act and they can trade. Otherwise, you know, we will be in the situation that the connections will be damaged and we don't have the possibility for the trade. And then we don't have the economies. Or also, you know, when, let's say, in one moment, Singapore will decide that they will not allow German Mercedes's or BMWs anymore into the country. So, you know, this is why the free trade and the international connections between the countries globally are so important.
Thank you, Minister. I'll now turn to Nigel Good Davis from the UK and from the IIIS. Nigel.
Is it? Oh, okay. Your remarks remind us that boundaries can be maritime and not only land boundaries. And you and your Finnish colleague will have a view on the recent activities by Russia on the Nava River, for example, the removal of boys. And also the suggestions floated and then quickly withdrawn, apparently by Russia, at least from the public domain, about plans to unilaterally revise their own interpretation of their maritime boundaries with you. It's a new and alarming threat in the wider context of the war on Ukraine. And your latest thinking and your Finnish colleagues' thinking about this challenge and how to meet it would be of great interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Pevka.
Your case first.
Yeah, okay.
I would be sacrificed to ask the first. But excellent, excellent question. Indeed, like Hanno already mentioned, that you may know we have had incidents in the Gulf of Finland, in the international waters last autumn. And good thing was that we managed to find the reason for the pipeline and cable cuts. But of course, the attribution is extremely difficult. But anyway, there could be hybrid actors behind. Then the incident actually we had last week, which really was quite interesting, precisely one week ago, where actually the Russians put in the website that the information that they will start the process to redefine their borders. Borders, which is of course something that you need to consider under the UN, of course, the UN Convention of the Sea of Loas, if you would like to do it in the sea domain. But it was withdrawn very soon after the reactions of the media already. And we never got any answer why it was done or whether that was, the subject was tackled by the Russian Federation Government at all. It could be something that is harmless. So that if they just revert or refer to the kind of the normal procedures, normal ways of defining your borderlines inside of your own territorial waters, that's fine, with certain caveats. But of course, in that case, you cannot exclude the disinformation and hybrid influencing, that piece of information which we actually had. And we happened to be in the same meeting with Hanno last week with Northern Group Ministerial when this case occurred. But Hanno may have more information on that text.
Well, for me, it shows only one thing, that unfortunately, Russia is not accepting the international law. And when we have, as I mentioned, you know, that we have different families and the biggest of these families is United Nations. And my question to all of you and to all of us is that when one partner is not accepting this law or these regulations, we have agreed all what to do. And the response, of course, cannot be that the only solution is military interference. So when one side unilaterally decides to change the borders... So in this case, it was just administrative. In our case, it was taking out the boys, although these boys were five metres inside of our territory, not even on the far water, even not on the middle of the river. And there is a, you know, they say that, or Russia claimed that these boys were not in the right place. But this is not the reason to take out or by force. Then you send a letter, say, hey, come on, gentlemen, you put the boys into the wrong place. Let's come together and let's go to the river and let's measure it and then let's put it in the right place. So this should have been the normal way to act. But they went in the middle of the night and started to take away the boys. So, you know, for me, this is just, you know, the example of not accepting the international law. And my question is, what is the next step? Are they coming to the land border and taking the fence and saying that, okay, the fence is not in the right place? We have to move it to your side one metre or one kilometre or 100 kilometres. So what is the action then? Of course, we will defend ourselves in that case. And still, the broader question is that, you know, that the international committee has to come together and say, in that case, that this is not acceptable. I don't know, will that help or not? Because we've seen also in United Nations that even when the Security Council is making a decision, then Russia doesn't care.
Thank you. I'll now turn to Queenie Chong from Brunei.
Thank you, Minister, for sharing your profound knowledge and experiences. My question is, do you see emerging technologies as a crucial force multiplier in enhancing the security and defence capacity of the small states? And if so, how can this technology be strategically integrated to ensure that the small member states can benefit effectively despite the limited resources? On top of that, do you see that the role of cybersecurity evolving in this context? And what measures should be taken to strengthen the cyber defence of the smaller nations? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll turn to Minister Pukinen first and go in reverse.
What is the first question? I could...
On emerging technologies and small states and then on cybersecurity. Emerging, yes.
Emerging technologies.
Yep.
Emerging technologies, it's really something Finland as a high-technology country is driving for. And we have quite a lot of experiences on not only telecommunications, actually Nokia is a well-known company still, on artificial intelligence, on the quantum technologies, of course, on certain cyber technologies as well. And currently, currently, the situation is that we, many of the Finnish companies are startups. And we need to find actually the ways how to support certain production or R&amp;D of the certain companies that seems to us is more promising in order to provide certain capabilities that can be used, in many cases, for dual-use purposes, not exclusively military, but also the civilian ones. Because in particular, on the disruptive technologies, emerging technologies, the civilian sector is in lead and private sector is in lead. In many ways, that was, I discussed that with my Singaporean colleagues today, the relative advantage of small states, if you have that level of knowledge in your country, is that we are very agile, we are quick. I mean, the, from, and it's based on the cooperation between academia, end users and the industry. And really, in a global competition, that really makes quite a difference if you are agile and quick. You can product from the idea to a production in less than, less than some bigger countries can do. So it provides you also, let me say, commercial markets. But some of the products, what I have seen still in my country are more PowerPoint slides than serious undertakings. But some of them are very promising. Of course, cybersecurity is one of the domains, actually, that may use the disruptive emerging technologies. And really, really, cybersecurity is something which we, as a high-tech country and Nokia country, have been developed since the outset. And I think in cybersecurity, the key subject is the cooperation, sharing of the information timely with, at a global level. Because the cyber threats, they don't respect the borders. And really, it's a good subject for any kind of defence and security cooperation with any like-minded countries in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Mamun.
For small states, we believe emerging technologies has a great scope. Because for the Maldives, our standing national defence force is very small. But our maritime domain is huge. We have recently started using UAVs to monitor our maritime domain. And we're in the process of doing a feasibility on using surface-going unmanned vessels to monitor closer-to-shore areas that need to be manned. This helps to protect our personnel during extreme weather and other unwanted conditions. And I think it is the way forward for small estates to use emerging technology rather than trying to expand the number of personnel in the military. Cybersecurity is something we take very seriously. Last month, the president has formed the National Cybersecurity Agency because we've recently had a few cyber attacks. In the past, Maldives been very small. We haven't come under target of any people. But now, we are in the process of forming Cybersecurity Command under this agency. Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Pevka.
This is a long question, a long answer. Because, you know, there are so many different layers. When we take the, let's say, internal security or the law and order, then of course, we can see a lot of good examples where we see help from the emerging technologies, you know, starting from the face recognition, starting from the decision-making process. Estonia builds a smart border, you know, when you can have identification, detection, et cetera. But then we are coming to the action phase. And even when there is a detection, then you have to react to that. And for that, still, you need humans. Then, when we come to the military field, then we are diving already to more problematic issues. And the biggest question still is the ethical question. Has to be there someone who makes a decision? Or can AI or robot make a decision? So far, I know that the Ukrainians are also testing already something. But so far, as far I know, in the military field, there is only one weapon system which use the automatic shoot option. And this is the Falak's gun on US vessels for the close protection of the air assets. So when it's too close, the humans cannot push the button. So the Falaks will make a decision and shoot it down when there is something flying. But all the other actions need human footprint or fingerprint. So this is the ethical question that can we allow artificial intelligence to make decisions? Then it's a decision of controlling the territory. Because you can have the best weapon systems in the world, you can destroy everything. But at the end of the day, when you want to control the territory, you need to have boots on the ground. So it doesn't help that you will destroy everything, but you will not have this territory under control. And everything regarding the technology, then that means that there is a counterforce to that, counteraction. You can bypass that technology. So the question of trust. You can, when you talk about drone technologies, then you can jam it, you can spoof it, you can take it down with kinetic approach. So it's, I would see that, that of course, every country is using already today a lot of emerging technologies. And we will use that more and more because, you know, the number of people we have, it's not, in many countries, increasing, but rather decreasing. So we have a shortage of people. But it will never substitute humans because you have to make a decision. And to shoot at someone, this is a very difficult decision, not to allow that for robots to make.
Thank you very much, Minister. And this brings me to the end of this session. It's really been a fascinating discussion, touching on a wide range of topics, including from economic security to emerging tech and cybersecurity. And we've heard authoritative perspectives from important small states in Europe and the Indian Ocean. And I think this has really been a great way to start the 21st IIIS Shangri-La dialogue. I would just like all of you to thank our panelists. And I'd like to ask you also to thank yourselves for making your comments and asking those questions. Thank you all very much. And I hope you have a good rest of the dialogue.